It's a little past ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular commissioner's court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, June 8th. Let the record show we do have quorum, everyone being present. Please stand for the president.
The legislature is by the United States of America and the report for which stands One Nation Under God. And the legislative also for the regular citizens of this world.
Just a minute, sir.
Any public comments?
They had called in, Judge, but they didn't show up, I guess, I don't know.
Can they all?
Somebody called in that they were gonna sign them, but I don't see them here.
Don't they have to vote via jet-up for that?
Not for public comment, not anymore.
So you're three one who's gonna talk to them, is that it? So that cover that item?
Minutes, did we have any?
Yes, they're bringing them in to meet, Judge. I have a copy here that either did, but I think that we had the meeting over there.
We'll come back to it.
I have one in my packet.
Okay, if you want, have a chance to look at them. I'll take a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, I oppose. Motion carries. The vendor's list, Mr. Please.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. You've got a copy of the vendor's list in front of you. You reviewed it, it's been approved.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, I oppose. Motion carries. Next item is claims.
Yes, again, you've got a copy of the claims in front of you. Those have been reviewed as well, and we recommend that you approve.
Motion to approve. Motion and second to approve, discussion. Honorable members, I oppose. Motion carries. The report burned the packet because of keeping it down to ten people or less. So I guess we'll look at them at your convenience, and then if you all have any questions, we'll find different departments where you might have questions on. Under my report, I do wanna report, I don't know if we have it on the item, but the order, the emergency order is up to be amended, and you all have copies of that in your packet. It's really pretty much what the governor is asking us to do, of which I don't agree with a lot of stuff that he's doing, but he is the governor and we have to follow it. He's opening everything up, really the major difference is he's opening everything up to fifty percent. That means...
It's a point, Judge. I thought we had, they had opened it already.
To twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Now he's opening to fifty, and on June the 12th, I believe, restaurants will be open to seventy-five percent.
When?
On June 12th.
June 12th?
Yeah.
This Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah, but ahorita it's fifty. Friday's gonna open up to seventy-five.
It's the Friday.
Yeah, and I don't know if you noticed, but our numbers have gone up a lot compared to where we work, and, you know, hopefully people will watch it on YouTube. The problem is that people get the feeling that because now things are open and you can go to theaters and you can go to restaurants and you can do all this stuff, that everything is clean and good. It's not, the virus has not disappeared, hasn't gone anywhere, it's still there. In fact, probably it's even worse now because there's more people that have it, so there's a bigger chance of we catching it. We need to refrain from going out, to stay at home, even though we cannot, I cannot order it, but I certainly recommend staying at home as much as you can, washing your hands as often as you can, sanitizing, the social distance, the mask, that must remain. If not, you know, Starr County will hit a hundred in the very, very near future. I mean, we're almost at sixty right now. In fact, I venture to say that today we'll hit sixty, and we've already had one dead. We have another, a person that's in Mission Hospital in intensive care.
From Starr County?
From Starr County, yeah.
How come it's very hard, Judge, to find out who they are so we can take care of them?
The reason is, is the people law. The people law does not allow it. When someone is sick, it's the privacy that you have.
You know, it's, if you're a church being, it makes no sense of what, that, the people that we are not precinct, the guy that, you know, the killer being, that currently, let me finish it, you know? His mom and his brother live together, and all the rest of the family comes in, have breakfast with them every morning, and none of them came out positive?
Yeah, well, the thing is, Commissioner, that, you know, say for example, right now, I could have the virus, okay, and I have no sentence. However, for you guys to catch it, there, I literally need to touch you, and then you need to touch your eye or your mouth, or, so just because I have it and I'm in contact with you all doesn't mean that you all are gonna get it.
That's what I'm trying to get to, you know, because, you know, it's kinda, like I said, and there's another case that, one person here that the, the courthouse tested positive, her partner, that they are being just, every more, every day, could have to go have lunch with, I mean, they're basically, every step they take, one, the other one takes it. The one that's very close to her tested negative, and some other, but from other, other area there in the same place, got tested positive, and so kinda, kinda, but you know, you never know, maybe that the one, the other one, her husband walks in the, in the pipeline certain.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way of knowing who contaminated who, but you're right, you know, two people can, can live together, one gets it, the other one doesn't, but, but they, what the scientists and the doctors do know is that the more contact you can have, the greater the chance of you catching it. Doesn't mean you're gonna get it, but the chances are greater, so...
Two relatives, one working husband, both tested positive.
Yeah, yeah, the hospital, when, when we tested, the hospital, the county, the cities, the hospital was the one that had the highest percentage per capita, and, and that's expected because they work with, with people that are sick, you know, so, you know. Fortunately, they tested positive for the antibodies, but they were negative for the virus, so, so that was good. But, you know, I guess what, what I'm trying to say is, we need to keep telling people whenever you have a chance, you know, everywhere I go, if they don't have a mask, they do a, la máscara?
And I, and I agree with you a hundred percent, you know, with that, you know, but it's kinda odd, you know, that, you know, these people living together, they're celebrating together and everything, you know, and they're in the same house, how they should, could touch everything that one other touched, so...
It also, I, I don't know what it is, you know, there's so many unknowns to this thing, but, you know, it's, it's like the flu, you know, someone in your family has a flu and the other person doesn't get it, you know? What is it? I don't know.
And the tests are, are, some of the tests, I don't know, in the one that we have, but some of the tests are very highly inaccurate.
Yeah, however, the ones that we have, when, when Dr. Vasquez re-contracted with him, he, he looked into that because at that time, no one had done it, you know, the only one that had was Webb County, and, and they, they contracted with a lab company and, and they found out that their test results were less than fifty percent accurate.
Less than fifty percent?
Less than fifty, yeah. So then they canceled that contract real quick, 'cause, I mean, it's no good. So when, when Dr. Vasquez was telling me about this, and I said, Doc, I need to see if, that, that the accuracy is, is better than, than average, so he did. This lab company that we have was approved by CDC, it was approved by the Health and Human Services in the state of Texas, and the accuracy that they said they would have was eighty-seven percent.
Eighty-seven?
Yeah, now, we did an in-house study that, that we paid people that we knew were positive and people that we knew were negative, they tested them, and it came out with about an eighty-five percent accuracy, but this was a small sample, I think it was a total of twenty or thirty samples that we did. So, so we're right there, about eighty-five, eighty-seven. It's not a hundred percent accurate, but it's, it's more accurate than a lot of the other tests. Now they, now they came up with one that's ninety-eight percent accurate, but that's quite expensive.
Yeah, okay, now, so that we're, the testing site's still here? I thought they were gonna leave.
We have one at the park.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, what happened was, STC was gonna start having classes for one. The tent, they were charging us twenty-five, thirty thousand, I don't know how much it was, per month to have a tent. So, so I told Dr. Vasquez, 'cause our numbers have decreased, so I said, you know, I don't think it's economically feasible to keep the tent going for that, for that kind of money. So then he said, well, we'll move it, just put up a tent next to the, in the parking lot, him and Dr. Bakon and the rest of the doctors, but when, when they tried it, I mean, it, it took over everything because there's lines of cars waiting to go in. So it affected their business, so then they said, well, we can't have it here. Where else can we have it? So I said, well, we have the, the county park, we had just done the food pantry drive, maybe doing it over there or something similar. So, City of Río Grande loaned us the tent that they have, the school in Río Grande loaned us the watercoers for the tent, and we pretty much set it up and, and no fee.
We loaned up the generators.
The generator también, yeah.
We're gonna take it always and try it as well.
The generator, para que lo use.
The biggest problem also is that... The, the, the Trump administration is willing, and the question is, how much are we willing to accept and, and people dying? And it should be zero, but, but they're willing to accept numbers.
Yeah.
And that makes it a problem.
Well, we, we had our lieutenant governor say that, in his opinion, it'd be okay if the older people died, as long as we save the economy.
Yes, sir. That makes it a problem.
So anyhow, you know, that, that is, that, it is, is we're, we're saving some money. By the way, on, on a good note, we did receive the three hundred and eighty-some thousand from the state already, so that's, that's in the bank. Unfortunately, we have already spent it all. No, I... I'm kidding, no, we, we do have some expenses that need to be paid, the tents and the testing and all that, but there's gonna be some, the good part is, we still have one point five million dollars that they owe us, that should be coming in hopefully in the near future. So, you know, at some point, whenever we get that, we need to have a workshop.
We need to know exactly where we're gonna be paying.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the thing, you know, we need to be careful that, that what we ask for is our eligible things, because if not, then we're gonna have to return it, you know, so, and we need to spend...
Using more gas, more plates, more supplies?
You know, I have all my list, but I think we have a disagreement between what Rose is telling us that, about what the governor's office said and what Marifena has done in her test, you know, so we need to clear up that...
Yeah, but it's, we need to sit down and discuss it. My, my understanding and, and some of the stuff that I've read, you know, 'cause I, I was thinking, for example, I'll just use, I mean, Leonard's, the Emergency Management Coordinator, he was pretty much just working on that, but then there, there could be a question because he is the Emergency Management Coordinator, so that is his job, so whether we have a COVID-19 or without, he's expected to get paid.
He's in office.
Yeah, so, you know, and, and we have a lot of employees like that, you know, in the food centers, you know, that, that they deliver food well. If we were doing that, they're probably not qualifying. Again, we need to clarify all that, because we need a workshop.
Yeah, because before they would come to the center, now we have to go deliver it, so it's gotta, you know...
Yeah, and, and, and I'm not saying that, you know, I'm just saying, we need to make sure that COVID...
Of course, but we need to clarify...
You need to clarify with the public, Judge, because, because then, we got some calls that we have money to go people with a life and everything like the other county, we need to clarify with the public.
Yeah, and, and, and believe me, I've gotten a lot of calls, you know, see, porque Ida was doing it, so they told me, because they got a hundred and fifty-one million and we got three hundred thousand. But, you know, hopefully, we can help them, once we get the other, the rest of the money to come in, but, but it's, we, we, we need to sit down and discuss.
And that part, I don't wanna say...
Because they send, they send, they send you the list, but I can read something and interpret something, you can read something and interpret differently, you know?
Yeah, pero, see, and that's, that's where we, if we have a difference of interpretation, then we need to get it clarified from the governor's office, so that we know that what we're doing is correct. I mean, one point eight million ain't gonna go very far. It sounds like a lot of money, but it's not.
They cheat them in hospital in three minutes.
Anyhow, we'll, we'll, just, just to give an update, pero, I don't know if it's on the agenda, if, to update the, the order.
Extend the declaration.
Yeah, it's, okay, we'll, we'll, but really, like I said, the major difference is, everything goes up to fifty percent, restaurants, restaurants go up to...
You know, come back to... Fifty percent, fifty percent.
Yeah, there's some that have chosen not to, you know...
But most restaurants, they have eighty tables, you know, but they're not gonna turn them over.
The lady called and she says, necesita abrir, no. El gobernador dijo que podría abrir, pero no tiene que ir, pues es que yo no quiero, yo prefiero, because they don't wear the masks. They say, I prefer no mask.
To go?
That's fine. I think the reasoning is, Commissioner, that when you walk in, you need to wear it. You take it off, but most people, after they finish eating, they stay there platicando, so then you have to wear it, when they stay platicando. I heard I went to one in, in McAllen, Italian, the plaxi glass, and, and you're by yourself inside the tape. I mean, there, there are different ways of doing, pero, I think fifty is too much, in my opinion.
The restaurant's office is seven to five on Monday.
Yeah.
The twelve, when is the twelve? It's Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, the twelve, I'm sorry.
No, 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 they don't.
China, and they said that they would be willing to share it with the world. The U.S. claimed that they'll probably have one by the end of the year. But between now and then, it was...
Okay, Judge, let me add, a little, ahorita, that tent that we have out there, let's say, a county employee has to go, be tested because of, to, to, they have to pay out of their pocket, or?
Well, and, and, and that's something we need to discuss. I mean, I, when, when we passed the order that all employees would be tested, the county paid, we paid seventeen, twenty thousand, okay, now, you know, I, I feel that if one of our employees tests positive, and we need to send more employees to get tested, that we should pay, but I need the court to, to approve that, you know?
It is my, of my opinion that way, you know, because, you know, I mean, we, they're still hiring employees and, you know, they, they don't, they don't have to, because they want to. And somebody told me, bueno, una les quitaron de insurance.
Yeah, but, but a rapid test, the, the insurance doesn't cover it. So if, if it's, you know, if it's okay with the courthouse, it's not an agenda item, but, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and prove it, and we'll ratify it in the next commissioner's court, that if, if someone gets sick and our employees need to be retested, if, if an employee gets positive and we need to test the people that they work with, then the county can pay. Now, if, if I get positive, porque I'm in Puerto Rico or whatever, and my, and, and I come, well, then, I need to check.
The insurance will cover it, pero, I was told, they said, well, our insurance is covered, yeah, but it's, it's still the county money, you know, we're, we're self-insured.
Yeah, but insurance covers no mask, the swab.
You know, they had to go be tested with the swab, you know, they already had been tested.
Yeah, but they check them otra vez con el, on the rapid, see, they check them real quick, ahí, if, because if you're, if you've had it for a few days, it's already positive, and then they do the swab. The swab will take about two days before they have the result, but they continue.
I don't think that, that was, that's what they, what happened, I need to check, but they won't get checked, but they did the swab.
See, they, they do both, they do both. Yeah, it, it really, el claro es swab, pero swab is covered by the insurance.
Judge, so would you like us to put together something, maybe not a policy, but just something regarding like the, the instances where the county would cover...
Yeah, I, I think that'd be good, you know, we can send it out to commissioners and we'll get a majority approval, and, and we think...
Just like saying, now, if somebody's in your department or your office, you know, then whatever, that doesn't cover if you're somewhere else and, and someone in your family tests positive, then that's something you gotta, but we'll, we'll talk about it.
If they've previously been tested, can they test again?
I'm sorry?
If they've previously been tested, can they test again?
Well, that, that's what's happening.
And how many times can they do that?
Could be eight, ten, twenty times.
Understanding you want to find that.
The White House, the White House gets tested every day. The White House gets tested every day.
Swab or the...
No, definitely, no. Pero, so, yeah, you know, and, and really, that's the best thing to do is to test often, pero, pues, we don't have the resources.
How much cost the testing, ¿quiere hacer que traigan?
Ahorita, cuesta...
So they say that we could buy it after the cover of the company?
No, no, it's not for sale yet. Eventually, it will be, porque it's, it's very similar to the diabetes, you know? Once, once it becomes available, va a costar unos cinco dólares.
Pero ahorita, se van a, se van a, se van a empapar ellos primero.
Yeah, yeah, and as soon as it becomes available, we can get it. Okay, any other questions on, on that?
No, sir.
Item number eight, and this is, oh, this is where it is, to extend the declaration and the public health emergency of Starr County, I think we discussed it enough, if there's any questions, I'll try and answer them, pero, we need to...
And also, we extended the declaration.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion and second, discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries.
This one will be extended to when?
Comment?
This will be extended to when?
June 26th.
Yes.
June 26th.
June 26th, but coming Friday, it'll be at, at...
Fifty.
At seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
For, for the restaurants only, so, everyone else remains at fifty, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, see, well, we're trying to do it every two weeks because the governor changes it, so, we, we do it every two weeks so we can approve it at the court, at the commissioner's court. I'm sorry, Rose.
I'm sorry, Judge, then, the motion can reflect that you're also adopting the order with the declaration, 'cause I think it looks like declaration?
Yes, yeah, it, it does, it does call for the extension of the declaration of the local disaster for public health emergency and, and the order.
And the order.
Okay, did I call for the vote?
Yes, it's already passed.
Okay, item nine is an action item, and this is to approve a donation to the Starr County Food Pantry precinct two in the amount of thirteen fifty.
Second, Your Honor.
Second, discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Item ten is to approve the purchase of Rightaway Eastman from Giotilde Arpeña Maritime Trust for Los Morenos Drainage Project.
Everything should be in order, Judge, the paper, other paperwork right here?
The, the only thing we need, Commissioner, on that, and, and I guess you all have the...
Survey?
The surveys, and we're, we're probably gonna need a new survey, well, this one was already done, but on, we have, the surveys are okay, we're probably gonna need a new title search because it changed the, the property, so...
Title policy?
Yeah, for a new title policy.
We can approve, can you say?
Yeah, we can approve it, you know, I'll go ahead and order the title policy. Motion and second, discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item and is to approve an interest-bearing account for the 2020 Help America Vote Care Act. This is, it's, it's a grant that, that we have applied for, or that we're going to apply, it's, I think it's with the Secretary of State, and this is just to give grant, grant money for elections.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Motion and second, discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. And then the next one is the, an action item and is to approve the agreement between the County of Starr and Secretary of State, agreement TX 20101, CARE 214, which is to, to approve the agreement on the grant.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Item thirteen is an action item and is to approve a resolution for the 2020 Help America Vote Act, Have a Care Act. This is a resolution that's in your packet.
Motion and second, Your Honor.
Motion and second, discussion. Honorable members, I, opposed. Motion carries. Item fourteen is an action item and this is, CBP is asking for the right of, did they ask for this before, underneath the bridge?
What, this, what, the border wall?
No, I'm on Rightaway.
They're, they're doing surveying along the river.
Surveying?
Yeah, and, and they ask, they, they need...
But the surveying is for the border wall?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's got these walls already on the other side of...
Yeah.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Take it.
Your Honor, if it's for the border wall, I won't know.
Okay, I do have motion and second, honorable members, I, opposed. Let the record show Commissioner, I'll, I'll go to the council. Motion passes. Item fifteen is an action item and this is to approve property tax refund.
Your Honor, on this matter... Your Honor, on this matter, uh, I don't know, because this is about the compressor, there's a lot of look that's coming in, I don't know if it's the same one. And because René is still working on, on, the, the Supreme Court overturned the, uh, the compressors, you know, that we, we taxed them here, that they, that they did on some work. But there was, I don't know if it's the same one, or they're still working on the numbers on this, on compressors, but I don't know if this, if this is the same one or not.
I don't know. You know, uh, Rena, you wanna check and see if, uh, I made this?
Sure.
This was a real, or was it?
No, 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 this was, when the people were drilling, they had compressors, like, they move them, you know, back and forth. And, uh, at that, at, at the time of the, of the earthquake, they were here in Stark County, and they taxed, we put them on the tax roll. And then they started complaining that those compressors shouldn't be taxed here, because they were not permanent. And they took it...
Who's requesting the, who's requesting the, the refund, the, the company?
The company.
The company. And it's a court order to say that they, they couldn't be taxed here, because they were not... They were just a per, a permanent, eh, for a small period of time. But, uh, then we got another one, that, I don't know if it's the same one. And they're still working, working the numbers around, see?
I know, I know.
And we approved already a refund, yeah.
We approved it here, and we already paid a bunch of money back to the...
Pero this one here, and this, and this amount, está incluido el hospital, está incluido STC...
Yes.
Y nosotros, so aquí se Stark County, who's gonna pay the hospital?
Yes, yes, they will be there.
And, and, that's what I'm saying, you know, we need to, let's say that, let's say that this is, all three entities combined, what's the portion of the county?
Yeah, she, uh...
See, she's on her way.
It, it should be broken up and, and, and...
Three parts, right. Even a total, one is a hospital, you know? I don't know what happened on the other ones too, you know?
No, 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 pero, this is, uh, the Stark County portion. Our, our portion is ten thousand, seven hundred.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I'm saying, we collect for the, I thought Rose, have you received anything refunding, ask people refund on the tax for it, see?
Uh, I haven't had anything in our board, but we have board meeting, uh, a committee meeting tomorrow, so I'll find out.
But prior to this one?
Prior to this one, I think there was one occasion when somebody asked us for some money back, because they claimed that this wasn't their, their final place, or something.
Their, their headquarters, yeah.
Right.
But the, the way, the way it works is when, when we give people that request refunds, the appra, it goes to the appraisal district. The appraisal district reviews and approves, and then they break it up, and they say, this is not a, for each entity.
Yeah, but we've had that, uh, situation at the police, where people were asking for a refund, and it was, I think, because they had some pipes here that were being built, and then they removed them, and...
Well, what, what it is, is like Commissioner Ranso was saying, the, the companies went through the legislature, and, and of course, they're big donors.
Right.
So they, they were able to get them to change the law. If compressors or different type of equipment were being taxed, let's say they, they were here in Stark County, so we would tax them. And, and the law changed, yeah, the, the, they're, they're gonna be taxed, everything will be taxed at their, uh, headquarters place. And so what do they do? They open up headquarters in West Texas, where the taxes are dirt cheap. Uh, so they save hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, and, and the legislature changed that. Uh, Ms. Alinas, good morning. There's a question on the refund for, uh, the compressors, the ten thousand, seven hundred, that's on the agenda?
Yes. Do you remember, uh, sometime back, that we had the, and I was close to you, I presented to you that, and, and also there was the...
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. However, uh, we had already paid a lot, a chunk of money to different companies. This is another company?
This is another company that's related to the same, to the same case, the same...
Okay, and then the other question, this ten thousand, seven hundred, that does not include the hospital, the STC, the city of Escolas? Uh, this is just strictly our portion.
Correct.
They, they need to return some other money themselves.
Well, if that's the case, you know, that's fine, but like I said, we collect taxes for all three of them.
Yeah.
And the bill goes directly from, from, from the tax office. And, and like I said, uh, if they said that, say, bill, asking the refund, totally, uh, the amount to the tax office. And my concern is that, is it, does it include the hospital, includes the STC and Escolas?
Generally, sir, whenever something is passed to the commissioner's court for your approval, it pretends to the, the county and the hospital, which is always, the hospital is always, uh, um, together with us, as far as any approval is one and any refund. Now, on the other hand, Escolas and the hospital, it's a different, it's a different story. They have the board, they have to approve their refunds, and they, and, and if it's granted, it's on their hands, not on ours.
Okay.
So whatever, whenever we give out a refund, excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting, whenever we give out a refund, it only, it's approved, the county portion and the hospital.
We cannot approve the hospital.
No, 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 I'm not saying that your approval, if, if you're approving the hospital, no. They always, their, their decision and the approval is based on ours. It doesn't, you don't, you don't have to make the, the decision for them, or approve their, their portion of the amount, no. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that whenever we have, that you all make a decision, and any decision that, any refund has to be made, they're always okay.
And, and they pay directly to the company?
Yes.
I guess the, the, the big question is, the ten thousand, seven hundred dollars, that it, that does not include the hospital, and, or we're paying for all of them?
This is only...
Any, any other questions? Moving to second, to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ramírez. Item sixteen through point nine, are the budget amendments, Mr. Perez?
Uh, yes, sir, a couple of things on, on those, like you said, between, uh, starting with number sixteen. Uh, number twenty-two is tabled.
Okay, let, let, let me then take sixteen through twenty-one. Are those okay?
Those are all good. Moving, we approve them.
Second, Your Honor.
Moving to second to approve item sixteen through twenty-one. Uh, motion to second. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-two, you said needs to be tabled?
Twenty-two is tabled. Motion to approve, Your Honor. Tabled.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Twenty-two? Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Second.
Second, uh, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-three through twenty-six?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-eight.
All of them?
Twenty.
Okay, uh, twenty, twenty-three?
Twenty-four and twenty-eight.
And twenty-eight, those are okay?
Those are okay.
Is there a motion to approve those three?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, left here, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-eight. Discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
And twenty-nine.
Uh-huh.
Those four. Those are all good, however, I wanna make a note that those are not within their departments, they're within the five. They're between departments within the five.
Okay, but, general, they're...
Twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-nine, all within the general fund, and twenty-seven is within the road and bridge.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moving to second, to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I, uh, I do want to recognize, uh, Mr. Perez and Mr. Ramírez, uh, for being here, and, and I thank y'all for, for coming, and, so y'all can start getting, I guess, to know what, what's going on in the county, uh, also to offer our services, you know, anything we can do for y'all, so this now... Y'all have any questions or anything?
No.
It is, uh, ten forty, and pursuant to section five-five-one, point oh-seven-four, we are now going to execute a session to discuss the order of salaries and to discuss the ASO bidding claims. It's, uh, eleven-ten, and we're back in open session. Uh, we only had two items in executive session, one was the order of salaries. Is there a motion?
I don't know, Your Honor, uh, with the exception of, uh, of the JP six.
Second, we'll go there.
The one we discussed?
Third one.
Okay, a motion and second to approve order of salaries, with the exception of discussing executive session. Discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item thirty-one was informational only on the ASO, and that's our in-house insurance, building insurance. It was just information, no actually. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ramírez.